You got a good mask, can you light?
I've got about dozen of them right there if you need one.
This is nice and soft to feel, I think. Fifteen seconds. Okay, if you got it. Okay, please join me in the flag slip.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning.
Morning, morning.
Okay, we got a couple of weeks of minutes to approve.
Yep. Know where they're at.
Uh, Ashley's gone, she's not here yet. That's the way for Ashley.
Is she here today?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's here.
Somewhere.
We'll wait Ashley to see.
All right, hello Eric.
So I was doing a radio program this morning and I kind of made arrangements to get rural fire district three to show up and I got a call late last night that said, "Well, Delwin had to just go work an accident." And I said, "Well," he says, "and he's headed to a structural fire, so it's gonna be a late night, so we're gonna have to cancel."
No, you did fine. I listened. You did fine. It was been good. I say I listened, you did fine. I mean, what you said was spot on.
Well, I got told Tony, I said, "He says, 'What are you talking about then?'" I said, "Nothing."
What about that fire April 95th, Lynn?
What's that?
What about the fire April 95th?
Well, I seen the fire marshal was out there yesterday taking a look at it, you know, it, I think it started on a bayel. And it burned the shed with both the ankles. So it's pretty suspect. You know, this time of season, people like to go in there and do garden things.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from quite a few here, November 9th, November 12th, and November 16th.
Do you have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? Paul and Vayner?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve resolution 29-21, the following checks, Bourbon County, Kansas, the following checks being over two years old are to be canceled by authority of KSA 10-18-10.
Do you have a second?
Dash 8-15.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul and Vayner?
Aye.
Aye, motion good. We're ready for it.
Well, what's this other deal, Ashley?
Okay.
Those are our things.
Yeah, that's something I got signed.
Okay.
Get your money back, get the money out.
Yeah, that's pretty neat deal with that school.
Oh, that.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I was so happy for your boy and Hayden, everybody. Yeah.
We have more refunds than we have calls. On this part of the year.
I'm a little worried about all of them, okay?
Just getting to say something. We didn't, nothing burnt.
My hair, no.
It's the second of our allergy season.
Why did that to God once we've been breaking a bit? Yeah, I might got put in jail for this. And I shouldn't have done it. Yeah, good job, about right here.
Yeah.
I give him a trip.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty neat deal.
Yeah, it was.
Hey Eric.
All right, got a couple permits here that we completed. First one is Melvin McFarland, 1048 240th Street. And the second one is Stuart Houston, 600 feet north of 267 Mexacre. While you're signing that, I'll let you know that up on 265th and Zink, I believe, Mr. Beth and Commissioner O'Hara was contacted by a citizen up there about a crossroad tube, been a little bit of ditching. We did get that completed this week, so.
I'll second on that. It was, it's actually the head of the township, as you call this for Missouri.
Okay.
And he did call back and said, "Thank you," and looks great.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Good deal. So, be pretty quick here today. Had a meeting with Trans Systems and KDOT this last week in regards to our bridge load ratings. It's like a five-year program that KDOT has contracted with Trans Systems. Anyhow, they inspected 28 bridges this year and all 28 met the minimum standards for the load rating, so we don't have to change any science or do anything there. Couple road issue reports that we received this last week. I do want to talk a little bit on this one from Ronald Ware in regards to Yale Road. I've tried contacting this individual, I don't know, multiple times, but he had made comment in his issue that the patches have failed or what have you, but I'm wondering if this is an old email, because we went up and looked at the road and all the patches are still holding and everything looks good up there. I wonder if it was an old email from when we mailed it up before and it just sent, or I'm not for sure. So anyhow, I know all of you received that, so I just wanted to clarify on that. And then the one for, that we received just the other day in regards to, from Dennis Frye, there is definitely some undermining and what have you, so we will get it called in. I looked at it yesterday. I'd show you pictures, but anyhow, it's a...
Prolonged span, or?
Um, it's on the outlet side, all the way under, and it's eroded underneath, so we'll put some riprap in there and we'll fill in underneath it, get it brought back up to standards. And then on the inlet side, one of the wing walls is completely washed out around it, so we gotta get some shot rock put in there on that, so.
Decked pretty good.
Decked, yeah, it looks, looks pretty good there, so.
Thank you for looking at it.
Yep, we will get that taken care of. Also, we're working on some guardrails and what have you. I believe the individual you gave me last time, I called, and it was actually at, I want to say 85th and Osage. It's kind of where the offset. Anyhow, there was some guardrail issue there. We got it corrected, and there's two or three others that we got corrected this last week, so. And when I say corrected, put them back up, welded in place, and looked like they'd had some assistance on being taken down, so anyhow, they're back up. So, still clearing overburden, hope to be done next week on that, putting in tubes and hauling rocks. That kind of gives you an update where we are there. Windmills, had our, had first post-construction meeting with Jeff Spangler, so we're following the road use agreement, and they're starting on their reclamation and what have you, and returning back to original condition, so anyhow, do have the road use agreement and we are following it, and they are following it, so everything is going very well with that.
Through there yesterday, and they're in the process of reclaiming their loans.
Right, right, yeah. Their turn radiuses and what have you, so. Right.
Leaving as a restraint.
Right. And then last but not least here, and I don't know if there's anything you can help me with on this or not, but I'm still running off of August budget report, so if there's any way to get it updated.
Susan. Now, there you go.
The last, last thing I show voucher, we still have the month of November that needs to be approved. We could get you probably through October reports now, but as of last week, the Octobers had been done, but I checked them this morning and they've been entered. So Ashley, maybe we can run reports. There's some very specific reports I want to talk to you about that we need to run for that.
Have you reconciled?
Nothing's reconciled.
Okay, well, I kinda...
Dude.
Doesn't, doesn't help us on, on budget amendments?
No, but at least your payrolls and your APs are vouchered and in the system, so we know what our expenditures are.
Right.
So that'll, that will possibly help me know if we need to do a budget amendment, but I really need to get November numbers approved and in there before I can even...
December's fast, that person?
Yes, very much so.
Yeah. And Susan, I know this won't help Eric today, but do you see enough changes down the pipe to 2022 is gonna be better for the reporting system, or do we still need to make more changes, or?
Um, I think I just need to get more involved.
And that will be in short order.
Good.
Yep.
I know it's tough, Eric.
Yep.
I did it for all of you.
I know you did.
I mean, it was just like doing hunting with blinders on. You're expected to run that, a big operation, and have no idea what your dollar amount is.
Absolutely.
Totally unfair to you.
Right.
Tell you that, so.
Nah, we didn't have any problems.
No, it was his gray hair and no hair.
Oh my.
Okay.
Every year I tell Jim it last year, like, what's been?
Yeah.
He didn't know.
Yeah, and lay there in Octobers, pushing snow, like, "Do we really have the money to do that?" But we gotta push enough, we gotta buy salt. But you don't, you just shoot from the hip, roll.
We are loaded on salt, so we're full, so.
I seen that in the way, so.
Yeah.
So one of the things I've been doing recently, and I don't know if you want to talk about it or not, is that you guys actually went out and put together figures for what it costs to produce rock for town.
Right.
And I figured I got what's pretty impressive.
Right.
I heard it coming less than what I, and that's perfect, that's great.
Three dollars and 58 cents, is that right?
I don't have that in front of me, and I'd want to have that number with me. We can talk about it the next meeting if you'd like.
Okay, well, I'd like to get that figure out, too. Like I say, it's impressive.
Yeah, that's good news we need to spread, so.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Good.
Yep.
Bean, bean permit still going, okay, or don't know, or?
Yeah, we're still moving along. They're just, we get like one step forward, and then we find out there's another permit that we've got to apply for, but we are in the process now of building the pad while we're waiting on.
Okay.
Final permits.
And still working with maybe the city property?
Absolutely, and I hope to have some information for you today on that, but we'll receive some more information that Justin and I have, have had conversations on, which it's looking really well, but we just want to make sure we dot all our i's and cross all our t's before we bring a recommendation to you.
And we just got to make sure the dollar amount on our parts good for everybody.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
You know, the mayor mentioned forever, and that don't work when you swap like that.
Right, right, absolutely, so.
Good, well, thank you.
Yep.
Cattle crossing signs, do we know anything about that, or had an individual that was requesting cattle crossing signs?
And that may be a question for Justin due to liability, and to be honest, I forgot to say anything to Justin about this, so he's getting kind of blindsided on this. I don't know if that would be like children at play sign. I know they highly recommend not putting them up.
My opinion, you're acknowledging cattle's coming across.
Yeah, so I don't know.
So who's gonna regulate the traffic when they're coming across?
Let's do this. Let me visit with Justin, and then we can come back to you on the next meeting.
He's right behind you shaking his head like this.
Okay, he says no, so.
Good enough, I just asked.
Yep. Okay.
I remember one time we put slow children up, and that woman said, "Why did you call my children slow?"
Right.
And she was, and she was mad.
Right, and I know from previous experience that you were insurance people frown highly upon putting those, because you're encouraging the kids to come out and play, so that would kind of maybe be the same.
That's absurd, anyway.
I know, but big lawsuits happen over it, and that's where it all...
Let's just...
Crazy lawyers.
Yep. Anyhow.
Sure.
Anything, anybody for me?
No, thank you for checking, thanks for checking out that bridge for Mr. Frye.
Yep, so, all right.
Is that one just south of his house, or?
It's straight east of Patty Vincent's house.
Oh, okay, way over there, okay.
Like 100 yards, 200 yards, somewhere.
Thanks.
Yep.
All right, so I'm gonna ask Patty to come in.
I didn't recognize you, Susan.
I know.
Reason I have put Patty on the agenda is because I got an email from Terry Serser wanting to know whether we're on the corrective action or audits.
I think that's great. We need a report.
We do.
Morning.
Hello.
So Patty, I'd received an email from Terry Serser asking if we knew where we were on the corrective action for the audits.
Uh huh.
So I was just looking for an update.
Okay, okay, well, what we're doing, we're moving ahead. Right now, we've got, Rhonda's just finishing up September balancing, reconciling. She's got it down to $27,000, which is down from several hundred thousand dollars before, so we're down there. We're, things are really, really busy in the office. We've got several things going on. On the quarterly report, it's almost ready to go in the paper. I want to talk to Susan a little bit about it, because I've got some concerns. On our September distribution, something went wrong in the computer. I mean, CIC and I myself have gone over it, tried to figure out. It, we don't know what number it took at times or anything, but on the...
Is that on the motor vehicle distribution?
Motor vehicle. Yes, the motor vehicle and the RV. And both of them are times different, there's no constant there. It's like they're doubled, or they're one and a half times. It's almost like, they said they figured somewhere in the, when it was running it, it just...
How's that gonna affect like the other entities, the city and the school district?
Well, what happened was, then that over drew the accounts, the motor vehicle account, the RV. And so I talked to, I've talked to Terry about it, and I talked to CIC. What we decided to do is we ran, we had to go back through, reverse the motor vehicle distribution, and run it correctly to get our numbers, but we couldn't go back to each entity and say, "We need this money back, that money back." That, we felt like it'd be a bigger mess. So what we did, but we run it back through their accounts, so that over drew some of their accounts. Our accounts are right now.
So they're gonna be running in a negative, and then when you do the next distribution, it'll adjust itself?
That's what, the October distribution was very detailed and very rough, because we had to go back and figure out what it should have been, you know, and they didn't get the money back. Some, a few got money, but most of them didn't, and I sent out something showing how much they're still in the hole on that. What I want to do before the end of the year, to try to clean it up, and to try to get them up to where they're positive, almost all positive, is run an extra motor vehicle distribution in December and clean that up. And hopefully that'll take care of it. Like I said, we, CIC went through days and days, I went through days and days, trying to find a combination that could have happened, because at first it's like, oh, you put in the wrong numbers. But they couldn't find the numbers, I couldn't find the numbers, and you run the RV and the motor vehicle distribution at the same time, and they, they're by different factors, so there's no rhyme nor reason to it, so I don't know what happened. I've had some problems with my computer. I wasn't up to Windows 10 at the time. I am now, I'm still having problems with my computer, though. And Jimmy is a whiz. I mean, he has helped us so much. He's there, Johnny on the spot. I mean, pick up the phone, call him, he's over there, he's fixing it, so nothing but good to say there. But anyway, like I said, I'll get that quarterly report in, you know, by the end of the month.
The quarterly report is required by not only Patty, it's required by the clerk's office, and it's also required by the commission. And so there's one that we probably ought to just do, it's a cash report, and then that, that does everybody. It gets the expenditures, it gets the revenue, and it gets the cash.
Oh, okay.
That's what's most important, and so I'll work with you on that report.
Okay, that'll be fine, yeah.
That'll satisfy everybody.
But I didn't want to jump in and do that till we had the distribution thing and everything all figured out, so that's why, as I said, we're still under the wire, but real close. The state has updated their motor vehicle system, which has put us into another mess. We can't do any scanning or anything, so we've got scanning stacking up in there, because they haven't got that straightened out, but there again, Jimmy, and I don't know who all behind the scenes and everything, did a good job making that pretty smooth and everything to go over to that. Let's see. And I was gonna, okay, do you, no, go ahead, and then I'll...
I think what the biggest concern is, is we have to make sure that we don't have any violations this year. That's our biggest concern, because we have been put on notice now through our audit, so hopefully, maybe you and I can sit down and...
That'd be fun.
...walk through all this.
Yeah.
To, to show that we've corrected everything. My biggest concern would be is getting everything, all the vouchers updated in the system, so that we can do some projections for year ends, that we don't have budget violations.
And I think we're getting really close on that. I mean, we've been, I've been going through the state stuff, Rhonda's going through the deposits every day and everything, and working on getting that, getting that caught up. We've come miles and miles and miles on that.
So tell me the process, after Ashley does a payroll or an AP, when do you guys reconcile those on the back, when do you voucher those, when do you approve those? Because they sit out there for a long time before they get approved.
Well, they get approved the day that we get that day balance, and that we've had a problem with that.
Okay.
We have been behind on that. We're getting there, and we're getting really close on being caught up on that, but we're just, we're so shorthanded, and it's, we've got, you know, bodies in there now and everything, and they're doing a great job at learning, but one month, two months, at that stage, employees are honestly more work than help a lot of times. I mean, they're waiting on the customer, but there's so much behind the scenes that has to be done, and corrected, and fixed, and everything, that that's kind of, and so on the motor vehicle from the state, it has to be reconciled with the state, and everything downloaded and going through there smooth. Well, if there's, sometimes a small mistake on there can take days to figure out. Well, that puts that all behind, and we can't reconcile and get...
If I could spend multiple hours in your office, would that help?
Huh?
If I could spend...
Yeah, I mean, you're welcome to anything. We'll take any suggestions or anything. I mean, I want it to run smooth. It's not fun, you know.
I'd be more than happy to come in and just spend some time, maybe help them around the...
Okay, that'd be great, yeah.
...audit today.
Okay, that would be fine, because, you know, I've been doing the daily, you know, reconciliations and doing all that, but with the audit, you know, with, or not the audit, with the distribution problem, and trying to do distribution and work on everything else, it's, you know.
And we got tax statements out, okay?
No, we don't have tax statements out. The tax statements are at the printers, and what happened was, we had the reservation for them to be mailed out on October 15th, or not October 15th, I'm sorry, oh, November 15th, and that's when we, usually that's our date to have them mailed out. We have them mailed out by a company in Seattle. Well, we didn't get them till later. There was some problems along the way before we got them to us and got, you know, the levies and everything approved and stuff, so by that time, we lose our mailing place in line. And that's what, you know, I mean, it's just all kind of the way this year's been, you know. So anyway, they've got everything there, they're just waiting to get them mailed. But people have been calling in, we've been getting, the mortgage companies all have theirs, because that's something that we mailed out on our own, but the individuals, they don't, so. And I mean, we're still well ahead of statute, but I would never want to get down to statute, because it's, I think, December 15th, which I cannot imagine, but they'll be out just as soon as we can get them out. So.
Thank you for the update.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay.
I'm excited about Susan working with you.
Yeah, that's great, yes, okay, okay.
Thanks Patty.
Okay, Jim.
Okay, you gentlemen, recall a few months ago, I brought up my concern with the SRO position in our U234 system, and I told you I was gonna start working with the mayor as a citizen, and I did that, and worked with the mayor as well as a school board member. We requested that Police Chief Shelton apply for a grant, and it was turned down for 2022, but we can always resubmit 2023. When I come to the commission this time, I'd like for us to move forward as a shared services with the city of Fort Scott, as well as U234. We only have one SRO officer in Fort Scott for four schools, and I think we can do better than that, and do a better job protecting our kids. I'm talking to the grandpa now, as well as the commissioner. I think two, and Bill could comment on this if he would, I think two will improve our system in Fort Scott, U234, with allowing one officer to have two schools each, like the Union Town officer, he has two schools, or she, I don't know, it's he or she out there, but the mayor and one school board member has requested that we come forward and share, for 2022, our share would be $20,000.
So what's the school gonna come up with?
$20,000, and the mayor, and the city's gonna put in $20,000.
So we're looking at 60 grand?
Total.
Total 60 grand?
Yeah, our share would be 20.
And have we prorated that as far as the number of days at turn schools? Are we paying for holidays and vacations and vehicles?
It'd be copy...
Or is this everything?
Be just like the one they have today already.
Well, I know what today they pay, how much they pay now?
$16,000.
$16,000?
Okay.
And they're using them over the half the time?
Yeah.
So maybe we need to get a little steady on actual cost.
Well, that's fine, but whatever the cost is, I certainly want to go forward, work with the city and school board to protect them.
I can pull the application that we just did for the SRO, that breaks it down by how many school days.
Good.
That would, that would get you, I can bring that to you in the next meeting.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to also see, you know, how we handle all the vacations and holidays, is that on the cities and counties?
Yeah.
All the vehicles and, and, and all the taxes and insurance, is that on the counties? Cities? Or is that prorated?
It's on the cities, yeah.
Yeah.
It's all tiddled in. What I look at is I look at the number of days in school. So there's, on the school calendar, it tells you actual school days, that student contact days is what they call it, and so that's what we use as our basis.
Can we get those figures break, broken down?
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to talk about it again next week if you'll be ready. Thank you, that's all I have, so.
All right, thanks.
I mean, I think we should clarify that currently the SRO officer is not one of Bill's deputies.
No.
No.
It is a city.
Yes, the SRR Bill has, is that Union Town.
Yeah.
And the one the city is city police. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Justin, you're up.
Nope, you skipped down there.
Oh, I'm sorry, Anne. Sorry, Anne, you're up. I'm, I have, I have a tendency to skip when I want to skip.
Just throw it in.
Okay, guys, I'm back today. Jim asked a question last week about how we know NHAs are connected or tied into 30 by 30, if they are tied to. To find any concrete evidence? No. No. But, so I'll go ahead with my presentation. In a press release dated May 6th, 2021, it states that the America the Beautiful Plan, which is what 30 by 30 is now called, will work collaboratively, I even practiced this word, collaboratively, to conserve and restore the lands and waters and wildlife that support and sustain the nation. It also states that this is a locally led and voluntary nationwide conservation goal. This plan will work in direct cooperation with the U.S. Department of Interior, which is over the National Park Service, which also helps with managing national heritage areas. And on National Park Service site, I, this is a quote, "In their own words, national heritage areas are not national parks, rather MPS partners with, provides technical assistance and distributes matching federal funds from Congress to NHA entities." I would add that we have four NHA entities in our county. And I would like to know how much money have they received from managing entities of Freedom's Frontier National Heritage Areas? America the Beautiful Plan also states they will work with USDA through the NRCS, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And that then includes the KDWPT on a local level, the U.S. Geological Service, the U.S. Department of Commerce, which NOAA falls under, and also the Council on Environmental Quality. In order to accomplish these directives of the 30 by 30 Plan, it will enlist the help of the Department of Interior, which oversees the National Park System, which oversees or manages the National Heritage Areas. All three entities have conservation, restoration, and preservation among their objectives. So, that's probably the only statement, you know, that, that connects all three, all of those things. And then two steps recommended by the report are the creation of an American Conservation and Stewardship Atlas. In other words, a map. Isn't it convenient that NHAs have already established federal boundaries? And the second step is to publish America the Beautiful updates yearly. Such phrases as "work in cooperation with local farmers and ranchers," "explore where there is support," "incentivize and reward voluntary conservation efforts," "community-led," among others, are used repeatedly. However, the inclusion of Bourbon County was neither community-led nor voluntary. Judy Billings came on August 22nd and announced Bourbon County is a part of Freedom's Frontier National Heritage Area. So, my questions are, why does a non-governmental organization have the right to use privately owned land in Bourbon County to expand the power and influence of the National Park Service? Why does a non-governmental organization have the right to use privately owned land to leverage federal and matching funds without the landowner's knowledge, consent, or compensation? This is a violation of the rights of private property owners in Bourbon County by using our property for a purpose of which we were not informed nor our consent given. I would contend that private property owners, especially those that make their living off the land, have been and always will be the best stewards of their land. I would like to remind you that these resolutions are only a statement of support to the private property owners of Bourbon County. Also, I have a newsletter from the Kansas Cattlemen's Association from April. And it says, "These and similar programs are best controlled and managed at the local levels. Producers that are concerned about NHAs are best off taking, talking to their local officials and commissioners. One can also seek to have their county officials pass policy that strengthens private property rights." And that's kind of what we're asking you to do. And then another one from the Kansas Cattlemen's Association that opposes the order, the executive order for the 30 by 30, the subsequent report, which is America the Beautiful, and calls for the immediate passage of the 30 by 30 Termination Act or similar legislation. And also from the National Cattlemen's Beef Association. Are those two things the same thing? Beef Association and Kansas Cattlemen's? In their policy handbook on page 128, it says, "Whereas NCBA has existing land use policy, which states in part that NCBA shall oppose state and federal land planning schemes, but support local land planning. And whereas NCBA is concerned that national heritage areas will negatively impact private property right, property owners' rights and abilities to manage their private property because of government regulations that limit agriculture activities. Therefore, be it resolved, NCBA vigorously opposes national heritage areas." So, I just wanted to follow up, trying to make a connection. I don't know, you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, thank you.
Okay, now, Mr. Meeks.
Thank you. I've got two open session issues and I need three executive sessions. Sorry.
Tis the season.
Tis the season.
Are you serious?
No, I'm serious. Tax sale, the sheriff was really gracious and kind. He turned my phone call, we worked out a date, January 13th of 2022 will be the first tax sale. I talked to Laura Holdridge and Patty. We'll have a list as the time comes closer. The documents with the courts are being processed now, worked on the weekend last night. So, hopefully, we'll have those done. They can redeem to the, you know, last second of the sale. So, that list isn't finalized until the actual sale starts. So, we'll have that list and then we're gonna hopefully do another two. We will do another two sales in 2022. I do want to commend the land bank. They had a, a meeting two weeks ago. And at that meeting, they have decided to take the properties that do not sell in the, in the tax sale. And I'm hesitating because I want to make sure I clarify this, but the specials that are on those properties will be included in the sale.
Yeah, clearly.
Yes, so the sale number will be special, so let's just say $9,000. And if they don't sell for $9,001, they'll go to the land bank. So, that's gonna be a real benefit for the Economic Development Director and also for the city of Fort Scott, in my humble opinion. So, we'll begin there soon. And then we'll have a, we'll have a list ready for the general public in the coming weeks so they can review that and go out. And we'll have pictures of the properties to sell on the day of the sale, too, so.
So, how many, approximately, how many parcels do we have right now?
It'll be, it'll be well over, it'll be well over 50.
50?
Yeah.
Does this include anything up at Hidden Valley or is that later?
Yeah, Hidden Valley will be included in the sale, too.
And that's a large portion of it or?
No, not this time, no.
Wow.
The next sale will be mostly Hidden Valley.
Okay.
So, we haven't, we're not gonna be able to resolve that problem.
Yeah, you know, no way that we can have, meet with the Hidden Valley organization again and see if there's any thing we can do.
And let, you know, Mr. Harrington and I did discuss the countywide land bank. At some point, we've talked about that a couple of years back. So, you know, something we could look into down the road. But because of their association, the way they're, and I'm obviously not their legal counsel. I've talked to their legal counsel, but their association bylaws make it very difficult for that property to get dumped into the land bank because they have an association fee that's due on every parcel. So, if you had 100 parcels and the land bank owned all 100 parcels, they'd have to pay $168 or $178 a year for association fees, so.
And my thought was that we go through this every sale, tax sale, and we never recover our money.
No, no, I, and that's a rabbit hole to go down, I guess. The tax sale never makes its money back. I, I don't, there's absolutely no way that it ever makes its money back and it can't because of.
Why that can't?
Because of the hidden, parcels like the Hidden Valley. And hopefully, the land bank's gonna stop the rotation of properties coming in, in the municipality of Fort Scott. But, I mean, our biggest portion of that sale usually is Hidden Valley. It's a lot, you know, we had one sale that had 78 parcels one year. I mean, it's pretty common for us to sell, you know, over 50 and we'll have a, a ton. And then I talked to Patty last week, too, and we'll be starting the collection process on the 2017 taxes. So, we'll have, we'll finish up 16 in 2022. And then we'll have probably a big sale for the 17 at the, at the end of the 2022 year.
Okay, right.
We'll just keep progressing through the, through the years.
So, do you have something you need to add, Bill?
Yes. Under Sheriff Cole met with the company yesterday in regards to forfeitures of vehicles and stuff that we seize. It was brought up during a conversation that they are willing to work or to talk about property and stuff. So, I wanted to have Under Sheriff Cole explain the meeting that he had. And this might be of interest because of the advertisement and the property and stuff, how they can actually get that information out.
So, it's a company called GovDeals.com. They're based out of Alabama, but I, they have an office in Kansas City. So, I met them a couple of weeks ago when I went to the Sheriff's Association. They came down yesterday. They're gonna sell our forfeiture cars, but they also do tax sales and sheriff sales and that type of thing, too. And it's basically, they take care of all the advertising and they put it on their site and it goes nationwide. And they get a lot of investors that will invest in these small rural communities. Just something to throw out there. I'd be happy to work with anybody to get them in contact with them. I know a lot of times when we've done sheriff sales before, you might get one person that shows up, you know, to, to buy that, whatever it is, or a couple of people. So, just an idea to throw out there. They do all the advertising. They put it on auction for however long you want it on there. The bid goes up and then they collect their money on top of the fees. So, like if a bid, if somebody bought it for 1,000, they may have to pay 1,100. And that extra 100 goes to that company. That's how they make money. We would get the 1,000, so it's all, they do all the advertising.
It's no commission-based, it's just straight on top.
Yes, straight on top. It's no commission-based and they have, they have their car team that I deal with, but they also have a team of like realtors and real estate people that push this information out. And they take care of all the, the filing fees and all that stuff, basically. You just tell them what the parcel is and what the description of the land is. They advertise it and then they, you know, whenever the, the auction ends, a check goes to them. They take their cut out of it and they send you the remaining of whatever it bid for, so.
We, we currently use a way, Bancorp just going out, Purple Wave, basically just a central location type advertisement. This company here, basically nationwide.
Nationwide.
Push it nationwide. So, that's when Ben told me about, hey, that would be a way to get investors from outside instead of just a narrow band of people.
This Purple Wave is centrally located like in the Midwest. Their home office is out of Manhattan. So, they basically stay in the Midwest where this company, its home office is in Alabama, but they have satellite offices all over the country. And so, they push that out to, to their people. She said, "Don't be surprised if you sell a car to somebody in California." She said, "Because of the way the market is, used car dealerships are picking up cars right and left." And she said, "And there's a lot of investors out there, too." She said, "They, they've sold, and they only deal with government entities. It's only government. They only deal with like school districts and EMS and fire and police and all that stuff. And so, it's all governmental directed. And so, therefore, they had like a fire station that, that, I think it was in like Oklahoma City, Tulsa, somewhere like that. They were wanting 90,000 for this building. They put it on the auction and it brought like 170,000. So, because people want to, want to invest and it's, some people don't like that because they don't want the people from out of town. And, you know, I know a lot of times we have people that buy land here in town and they never do nothing with it and then we go right back to the same deal. Something to look at, though, just throwing that out there. Be more than happy to work with you.
I know, I know, Jim and I go through Purple Wave an awful lot. We get, we get a lot of out of country bids, bids on, on this stuff. And it has been, it has been very, very lucrative, if you will, for, for us to, to use Purple Wave. And I think it's a, a big good option if it's available.
Right.
So, we need to kind of, kind of figure out how we can look into it.
Yeah, we can definitely look into it, for sure.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, it might save time on Orion and may save some money.
One of the things.
The only thing, the only thing I see is, is that.
We have some local, we didn't use, we don't use auctioneers because of the small margins.
Right.
So, one of the things that we probably want to do to help our local providers is allow them to possibly bid it and see what the specs are. I mean, obviously, they, I think they can't compete against this group because they're gonna have it nationwide. But I know some online auctioneers that are here local that might want to try, you know, I don't want, I don't want to, we probably want to bid it out, is what I'm saying. Just to make sure that we get, you know, touching the spectrums. I mean, there's, this is really unique, but in our case, we want to make sure that it's a local auction. We'll have some local auctioneers.
Yeah, I see the other thing we have to really be clear on is some of these parcels do not have clear title.
That's another interesting aspect of it, too. I mean, we're not guaranteeing a title insurance. We're not.
We're not. Okay.
If that's an option, I'll be.
Thanks, Bill, or Ben, and Bill.
I have to talk about an agreed order of stipulation on a building. I need permission to sign this. It, we've reached an agreement with the value merchandise building. The stipulated values for 2020 and 2021 are 4.8, 8 million. Round, you know, and then the original values were in the low 5 million range. And so, our experts came in and did an evaluation and this is the agreed, agreed stipulated value. So, I need your permission to actually approve this agreed order of stipulation. I've worked closely with Mr. Quick and this is a good resolution. It is set up for a formal hearing in January, but we've reached this agreement prior, prior to that hearing.
Do you need your resolution number or?
No resolution, I just need your permission. I need, I'd like to have a motion to sign this to make sure we're dot our i's and cross our t's.
Intertend a motion to.
Make a motion to allow Justin, the county councillor Meeks, to sign the agreed upon stipulation between, I guess, the county and value merchandise to their value.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I need a executive session for attorney-client privilege. Possible, I mean, it's contractual mostly. It's a contract issue, just to go in and discuss for five minutes. And then I'll have a personnel one for seven and then we'll do a acquisition of real property for probably 10. So, I just want to have those three executive sessions. There, I hate to do it, but there's no way we have to do it.
Okay.
Executive session, so.
So, privileged information on the first one?
Yeah, with contractual issues.
Make a motion to go into executive session under KSA 75-4319B2 for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship for contractual issues for.
FASCO seven. And then the next two executive sessions, the.
Seven minutes.
The personnel one, I'll have Susan and the next one.
And it will include the three commissioners and Justin. And we will return here at 9:52.
And the other two, I'll have other people in, just FYI.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye, motion carries.
I make a motion to resume normal session at ten oh three and there's no action in that one, right?
No action.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
How much time do you need on this one?
Probably ten minutes. It's acquisition of real property, two different parcels. I need Rob Harrington and Susan in this one.
Okay. Make a motion to go into executive session, KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B six for the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property to include for just that, two different parcels.
Oh, I need Eric Bailey too. Sorry.
For, and we would need the three commissioners, County Councilor Meeks, Rob Harrington, Eric Bailey, Road and Bridge Director, and Susan Bancroft. I mean, for ten minutes, sorry. I don't think I said that, did I?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And that'll be my last one.
Make a motion to resume normal session at 10:14 with action.
Here, second, second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, question carries.
I, you want, I'll make, I'd like to make a motion to allow Susan Bancroft to negotiate and discuss with the city on acquisition of approximately 13 acres south of our landfill that would become part of our landfill.
Here, second.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's take a short break.
Yes, please. Yeah, it's actually, you know, it's over that, though. You know, that's what's interesting. Well, there's been other stuff on it. I don't remember. Did I send that to you?
All right, we're back. Susan.
Yeah, yeah, we'll talk about it.
So what's before you is all the charges that and how they're coded for our EMS. And so Clifton had called me last week. There were some concerns with the ambulance billing service and what Medicaid paid for and what was left remaining on the bill. And so I'll let him kind of talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so apparently, and it was, yeah, what Medicare considers customary and insurance companies consider customary charges, we're actually charging more than that, which is our right to do, I guess. But in my opinion, we're a not-for-profit organization. We should be writing that over and above off for our constituents. We should be collecting the insurance bills, which is what every other, not every other, but which is what most healthcare systems do.
Yeah.
I mean, there are some that are ruthless and we've seen that in the past here that go after uncollected debt. We should not be doing that, in my opinion. We should be collecting what the insurance agrees to pay. And we are not. We are charging over and above.
I agree, we should.
So you want to make a motion?
You want to make a motion to have me negotiate with Omni to look at how we've been billing in the past and what we need to write off based on Medicare charges?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion to allow Susan Bancroft to discuss with Omni our billing practices when it comes to our ambulance services and to negotiate that, or not negotiate that, to set that policy to customary charges.
Here, second.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, question carries.
I do have a question for you. Do you monitor the rent that those folks are paying?
Yes, yep.
So you think it's going well?
Yeah, yeah. We've had a little bit of trouble with getting bills from Mercy, which is actually Ascension. Apparently how their contract was set up, that Mercy has to make that payment. So we've been having trouble with that one. So I need to follow up and see where we are on that one. But everyone else has been paying on time.
Do you know how long the college contract is for?
It's done.
It's done. They're moving out?
Yeah, well, I thought they already did. Did they not?
I don't know.
Yeah, back in September, maybe, I think, so they were done.
I'm always 60 days behind, that's all. I don't come down very often. Okay, thank you.
You mean you don't walk cross-street?
No, 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 no. You don't understand my wife, do you?
I attended a work session the other day for ARPA funding and some of the internal controls and subrecipients. So like our rural water districts would be subrecipients. And Justin and I are going to have some work that we need to do on creating some policies and how we're going to handle those funds going to them and what's required of them to send information back to us. So I will be working on that over the next month. So we will not be releasing any money until those are in place. Just wanted to be in case you got a phone call. But we've got some, some very specific things that we need to do as an organization before we release anything to a subrecipient. I think that's all I had. Any questions for me?
No, thank you.
No, I don't. Private comment? I'd like to get official's comment.
No.
No.
All right, commissioners, oh, okay, your mayor.
Just two things I want to bring to your attention. Next Tuesday, the 30th, is when the closing or when the contractors will be here before you in regards to the HVAC system. They're at the jail. It's been published, certified letters have been turned in or mailed out. Some of those certified letters have been signed for and have been returned to me. So at 10 o'clock next Tuesday, I set aside the bids to be opened and decisions be made as to what to do with the HVAC system, okay? Go ahead.
Does anybody know the warranty on the building?
My question has always been, has the county ever signed for the building?
Rev's got a 30-year warranty on it.
So.
Do we have documents anywhere that I can review?
Yeah, I do. There's, I've got some, I'll have to dig them out.
Okay.
So meaning, bill signed for the building, what do you, what do you mean by that, I guess?
Usually when a contract is done or a construction site is done.
Oh, you've signed off on it?
Signed off on it and stuff. And I have not seen an official document saying that the county hasn't.
Anybody walked through, basically?
We have gone through, what they call a punch list.
Right.
But we, there are some corrections that were not made. And so we kind of argued, and this kind of goes back to the meeting a couple of years ago, which brought up this HVAC system, several county officials, not including us, attending this meeting along with several of the other contractors. I have no idea what took place during that meeting, what was discussed, what was required. If there was any financial means or monies that was exchanged to get anything fixed, I'm in the dark.
Okay, so, so in my opinion, we need to find those contracts and.
You can find a contract, but there was never a sign off on the acceptance of, of anything.
Yeah.
No.
The architect was, was the Goldberg group, the engineer would have been Dominic? Dominic something, I have that name at the office. And then the actual construction company who overlooked everything that should have signed off. Did they, I don't know, it was Universal? And they were the, they're the ones that had the super on site, like I said, supposedly signing off on everything. Once again.
So they were the GC, they were the general contractor?
Yes.
I agree with Clifton. We need to follow up and see if there's any warranties or anything. That building's not very whole.
And what's the HVAC system that was there, that's there now currently, is that we had, I think there was three different companies that decided to put three different parts or components or whatever. None of them communicated with one another because supposedly this was supposed to be a, a, a system that you can go to a website online, pull it up, and you can make the adjustments and then that way. There's not a.
Is it Johnson Controls?
Johnson, CNC.
Johnson Controls, CNC, C-nim, and there was somebody else.
Somebody else. Once again, I, these were all supposedly meetings that took place and we weren't actually included.
Well, the HVAC system was never discussed in that meeting whatsoever. That was part of the process, part of the bidding process, and that was never discussed in, in any meetings if you weren't there.
What meeting are you talking about?
The way they put that HVAC system in there was the original designs and the way they bid it out. You know, we fought that thing and fought that thing and fought that thing. And they did come in and corrected the point. And I'll talk to Shane about the adjustments because Shane is basically the expert on, on manipulating that system. And I've never heard anything since then on, since they fixed that system, any complaints, until today. So, you know, I don't think it's fair to you come up here and point the finger at us.
I'm not pointing the finger at anybody.
Yes, you are. And, and the other part of that is, when, when you, we had the meeting, you, you had such a bad relationship with them. They wasn't going to meet with you and you weren't going to meet with them in Kansas City. In fact, you went in and put, and give Goldberg Group back the plaque and said you didn't want to see anything happen until that, until that building was fixed.
Just for the record, Lynn, I didn't take it that Bill was attacking anyone here today.
Well, I did, because I was in the middle of it.
That's your choice, but.
Anyway, anyway, as far as the HVAC system, we do need to get the bids out there and we do need to take, collect the bids and get them fixed.
I believe Clifton is our designated to work with the sheriff and this includes Susan. We'll pull the records, we'll see if there's any warranties, what happened, et cetera. We'll do a follow-up and Clifton's involved with it, he's, or lays on with the sheriff. And get Susan involved and we can fix this without pointing fingers.
Yes, we can. You know, the meeting, the meeting, like I say, you would have been invited to that meeting, but we couldn't get you into the meeting. We really couldn't.
Well, I'm sorry.
And we, and we did, as soon as, as soon as the meeting was over, we brought the whole group back down to discuss what we had discussed in that meeting and they did not fix everything we wanted fixed.
Okay, well, so.
So I'm sorry, but, you know, I, I have a comment to make on this. Number one, I was never invited to any meetings whatsoever. Did I get along with everybody? You bet. I got along with Kevin Roach with GGA. I got along with Universal. I got along with everybody down there trying to get that project. everybody down there trying to get that project going. To make that allegation, I wasn't pointing the finger at anybody. I'm just saying if there was a meeting that took place in Jefferson's, or in, in St. Joe, I wasn't invited. If I was invited, please show me that documentation through an email. And I'm talking. I allowed you to talk, now it's my turn to talk. Okay? Never once. Every time they call, I was down there trying to do something to correct that problem, even when former Commissioner Nick Rule was here. And he was told by counsel not to meet with us whatsoever. Okay? So don't say that I didn't get along with anybody. I attended every meeting that was there. Matter of fact, I got a great working relationship. And I challenge, I challenge anybody that made that comment that I didn't get along with them to come before this commission and address that.
Did, let me ask you, let me ask you one question.
So now, we have Mr. Walker here who can justify that, hey, we got along great with that group. So I'm going to invite Mr. Walker up here to be very honest about this whole project in regards to me getting along because we worked very closely with Mr. Walker trying to get this project going forward.
Let me, let me ask you one question. Let me ask you one question.
Please do.
Did you, did you, did you walk into one of our last meetings with a plaque that was given to you by Larry Gilbert and give it back to Kevin Roth?
Nope.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did.
Nope, I'm sorry. We're going to disagree to disagree on that one.
Yeah, we can, but I was there and a lot of the people was there.
Let's just call time out here. We're not getting anywhere.
What happened two years ago doesn't matter.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
In my opinion, we're here today.
Yes, I agree.
So the reason why I'm here today is to get this fixed and get it done right.
To know, is there, there should have been, I mean, how old is the building?
Four years old.
There should be, there should be drawings and that.
So.
I've got them all.
There should be paper, work on warranties.
So we need to look at the warranties of the, on the stuff, and, and they need to fix the problem, plain and simple.
And I mean, correct my suggestion. We need Shane involved with everyone else because he's pretty much on top of the project. This is something we can work out simple.
Yeah, yeah.
Bill, we'll fix it. We'll work together. It's Shane, Susan, and Clifton. And working with you, we'll, we'll get the old documents out. We'll look at if there's any warranties and there must, it might not be. We might have to hire somebody after your, your bidding process. But we can at least look at the warranties and see what, if there is or is not, and move forward. And we don't need to point fingers this morning.
Now, like I said, for the record, I wasn't pointing fingers at anybody. I was just making a suggestion of what's been going on during this process and the steps of trying to get this corrected and fixed.
I agree. And we need to. If the, if the roof's been leaking, I'm sure it is, you wouldn't say, this length of time we've been talking about it needs fixed.
Oh, it does.
We're getting ready into a wet season here, so.
So Bill, I'm, because I'm just coming new into this, can you put together a list of things that are issues so that we can be prepared, we call this general contractor and the engineer, to provide them? I know the HVAC. Are there other major issues?
General contractor, I believe there was issues where there were executive meetings taking place because of one of the superintendents that was there. I don't think Universal, who's the general contractor, is willing to talk to anybody in regards to Bourbon County because of the issues that we got in regards to.
Well, they don't have a choice.
Yeah. Let's just say that Universal, let's just say from what I've understood, from what I've been told, that Universal has, I've been in trouble here recently, not confirmed, but a reliable source, okay? Is Universal, would they reach out? Okay. We can try. We can do whatever.
Let's try, let's try.
So I'm holding through our, how we'll do is we'll go through our architect and engineer. They will be our main point of contact, especially if the project was never truly closed out.
Nope, never was.
Then we pull a meeting together of all, everybody, so.
So, but yeah, at least, I mean, I still remember the day when HVAC system, when we pulled a rag out of the drainage of an HVAC system.
We had another problem there, too, that I don't think has probably really been resolved. And that was exhaust for CO2 in Sallyport. They had, they had a, they had a system in there, I think it was a Siemens system, that would never did work right. I don't know if it's working right now or not.
I can't tell because we.
I can tell you that the louvers stay open all the time, the fan constantly runs. I mean, there's a, there's a punch list of items that.
They have a punch list.
Former commission had known about it prior to us moving in. After we moved in, there were several meetings. Nothing got done. So I figured if submission didn't care, why am I going to?
This commission does care. Get that list to Susan.
I understand, but I'm just going off, off history and then the whole project in general. But we've had problems. My main concern right now is the HVAC in that building. It was never right before we moved in. It hasn't been right since we moved in, and it's not right today. The thermostats are set at 75 and a 64 in that building. We have, we have spent numerous, we have spent thousands of dollars to an area of business to try to rectify that. And then that's when the sheriff said, I'm done, send bids, we'll go this way to get everybody's expertise.
Of which we should not have probably spent. So let me, let's do some, let's do some.
But at the time, I gotta keep 75 people warm.
No, no, I did that. That we need to collect all that information and go back and have some real conversations up in the drawing board. So, okay.
Thank you.
Offline, we'll talk about this. How about that?
Okay.
And so, and the second item is Rob here?
Uh, Rob, Sheriff wants you. Uh-oh, I didn't do it.
Uh, kind of on a lighter note, today is his birthday, so if everybody would just join me and sing happy birthday to him, that really would appreciate it.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Rob. Happy birthday to you.
I don't normally get embarrassed.
Look at his red face. Look at his red face.
Look at his face. His ribs and stuff.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
All right. Commissioners' comments?
I have nothing.
Clifton? I don't have anything.
Done?
Done.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Here, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.